All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
This is our special.
Oh, no. It is the Committee of the Whole. Because I just want everybody to be on their toes. I want to do things differently today. Sorry.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Tolleson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Albright. All present.
Okay. We have the procedures for public participation up on the board there in blue. Prepared statements. If you have a prepared statement, you can give a copy to the Board President. It's me. Prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You get three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When your three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item not on the agenda, as well as the agenda items acted upon. Comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And moving on to announcements. I don't think there are any agenda edits to the Committee of the Whole. Is that correct? Yeah.
That is correct.
All right. So there will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss personnel. And moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Just some information on the Anderson Board. Our administrative retreat occurred last week from Monday through Thursday. Administration took part in various professional and continual learning activities centered around our district vision and mission and core shared values and beliefs. Ms. Owens, Director of Elementary Education and Continued Learning, did an outstanding job of planning and facilitating this experience for our team. And also various team members too facilitated some of the learning throughout the week. It was a week that was done very well and really appreciative of the learning that took place. On the agenda for the voting meeting, special voting meeting, you'll find many recommendations for professional staff, new hires, as well as some support staff, new hires, and administrative staff, new hires. And we are excited about these staff members that will be joining our Blazer Learning Community Team. The contracted service providers for our buildings and grounds and for custodial services under the leadership of Mr. Biggerstaff continue to do an outstanding job of preparing our buildings and grounds for the upcoming school year, which two weeks from today, staff will be returning for the start of that school year with our learners returning three days later. So we're excited to be able to get everybody back into the buildings and in-person environment. And our professional staff has slowly started returning to their respective buildings to be in preparations for the school year and will continue to do so over the course of the next two weeks. That concludes my report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Normally, we would have our voting meeting first. I'm sorry to put that off for some of you if you were here because your name appears on the voting agenda, but I switched it around today, so there aren't a lot of items on the Committee of the Whole session. So we're going to move straight on to secretary's correspondence. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just basically, I didn't get anything specifically to you, but as a board, we certainly received several emails, I believe under 10, about our safety plan. I believe, thanks to you, Julie, that you responded to everybody.
I believe so. I'm sure I'll hear about it if I'm wrong, but I believe I've responded to all of them.
They started coming in the last couple of days.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Moving on to BCIU report. Mr. Miller.
There wasn't a meeting in July. The meeting was zoomed off.
Thank you for that short wrap-up. Moving on to BC, Burke's Career and Technology Board Report. Ms. Thompson.
We met August 3rd and basically just talked about preparing for this year. We'll be talking about those initiatives and strategies. Nice meeting with you since first myself.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Legislative report, if any. Mr. Strobel.
There's been a meeting actually four, maybe eight in July.
Oh, okay.
And I don't have, I was just looking out, I don't know what schedule they're putting in. I'm sure I missed it, so I think it'll be the next scheduled date.
Okay.
Yeah, that one will be in September.
All right. Okay, any other board reports? Okay, any board members have questions about any other reports we just heard? No, they were pretty quick. Any public comment on any of those board reports? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to finance. Yeah, there's not a lot there. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? For Ms. Haynes or for Dr. Cooper? Do you have any public comment on finance items? And moving on to programs. We have all the student handbooks that I have not read yet. I don't know if anybody else has. Yeah, anybody have any comments, questions, concerns for Dr. Cooper or Mr. McKnight? Do we have any public comment on student handbooks? Our enrollment statistics are attached and, oh, it actually looks like, let me read them. Any comments, questions, concerns for the board on headcount? Moving on to curriculum instruction. I'll save Ms. Albright the trouble. There was no meeting in July. She gave her report on what happened in June, in July, and the next meeting is August 23rd. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Public comment? Okay. Extracurricular. Mr. Miller, might it sound similar?
Yes, the meeting was canceled. We didn't need this conference.
Okay. And then September 13th, is that not right?
I guess.
Okay. Okay. Any public comment on extracurricular activities? Facilities and transportation, Mr. Strobel? That one we actually had.
We did have that meeting. Sure, we had it. A report on the summer cleaning, 185% complete, it's going very well. No problem getting done. School year starts and yet it's waiting at this point.
Okay.
The intervening century, these periodic challenges, we've got 3% of the productive bits processed, the lowest being 173,540. And so we'd like to move forward entering into the committee.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight.
We still need a few more pieces of information before we move forward with the 173,540. We started that mainly because we weren't going to start in mid-16.
Right.
If these things are done prior to the meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Strobel on that?
Yeah, a couple. How many bids did he get? And the three, and who is the lowest?
That's, we're still validating on that. We're saying Simon, Simon Rupen, I believe it was, but we're definitely validating now with some questions as to whether or not the bid, whether it's just getting subcontracted, there are the difference in the bids compared to that. And actually, 240, actually 240.
Who were the other bidders?
Ganter.
Ganter.
Ganter was the first.
Ganter was the number 1,000, the number state was.
Right.
So I'm going to have to add that.
Halk.
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 Halk was the third one proposed.
Jott.
Jott, was it?
Jott.
Jott.
J O T T E A.
J O T T E A.
Okay. My one second.
We're getting clarification on, was it Simon or was it Ganter? I suppose Ganter was written on the compilation document, and it was prepared by Simon Rupen. Steve wasn't very clear, so questions and clarification.
And the one that you're interested in adding as an agenda edit to the voting meeting was the lowest bid, right?
Was the lowest bid.
And it was, tell me again, the number?
No, I'm sorry. It was 173,540.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, there was nothing else, was there?
No, no, already.
Next meeting is September 13th. Anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Strobel, especially about the roofing project? Okay, hearing none. We have any public comment on facilities and transportation? Okay, moving on to finance. Oh, was there, did we do this report?
Yeah, we did. We did. In July, we did not have a finance meeting in July.
Yeah, okay. So we've already had a report on the June meeting in July. Next meeting will be the 23rd. Any public comment on that? Moving on to policy review. We did have a meeting tonight. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. We did discuss a couple of policies. One that came up, I guess, at our last meeting, and that is public participation in board meetings. And this is obviously pertinent to what we're going through right now. As a committee, and this is only a first reading, this is not like a final thing, but as a committee, we have agreed that we're recommending Zoom calls would be allowed, correct me if I'm wrong, but Zoom calls would be allowed for the voting and the Cowan meetings. We're just asking that people be present to provide public opinion and speak. So it just quite simply, you could, we're totally transparent, you'll go watch the Zoom meeting. Not quite sure how that's going to go, but we'll figure that out in a short time. But it would allow people to listen, but if they have any topics or anything like that that they would like us to, would like to recommend, we ask you to be present to speak as a person.
Question, you said watch the audio only?
Well, that was discussed. So whether we're, I didn't feel like we need a, I guess we made a recommendation to go audio for the meetings, but it wasn't, it burnt up versus being in video. I don't know, I really don't have a preference.
Public options.
Yeah, we did discuss a couple. I mean, I, it just came up about literally having a touchscreen there with their needs, but I think this is going to be a next decision, maybe.
Okay, so is there a policy draft?
Yes.
Okay. Does it include video or?
It's currently listed as "and/or", audio and/or video. So it's, and it is not, this is just something that's going to first reading, it's not ready yet. So the way it was written, it had both as an option.
In fact, while we were discussing it, it was just brought up whether we just go audio versus live. But you know, it's all live, but whether we do video or use a touchscreen. The second policy we spoke about tonight was local board procedures. This was Code 006. The gist of it is, again, this is just a first reading, there are no policies, but is making sure that our board members are present at each meeting. We have a recommendation that they do not miss us. We don't miss more than 12 meetings a year. Now, that, of course, that means you can call in and stuff like that, but the gist of it is we want people to be present, we want them to be here for the meeting, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board. We also, I had a recommendation, again, this is something we can discuss later, but missing no more than three meetings in a row, with the exception, you know, somebody's ill or, you know, we get that. And then as far as missing a meeting, not being able to be here, Julie, and we've talked about this, I just, I think it would be extremely fair to at least one hour notice for some reason, if it's work or something that came up, if it was accident. In our policy, it states three days, and I think we all have agreed that's a little three days. Anyway, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Just to, just to be clear, the ridiculous wording that Mr. Scott refers to is not something that anybody from our district came up with. That was the boilerplate language that was provided to us by PASPA, which is a state organization. So we're tailoring it to make more sense for us.
I apologize.
No, 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 it's cool. All right, and that all of it? Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Scott or Mr. Hurley about policy from the board? Any public comment? Okay, moving on to technology. Did we have a technology committee meeting?
We did not. We did not. He's got to update it. We've first and foremost, we're just going to write next year.
Okay.
They provide campus training, for instance, administration, and treatment environment, and they're moving toward new server requirement, stem process, integration, installation of that process. So still there are two things we're working on bringing up. In our next meeting, we'll point there.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Strobel? Any public comment? Okay, old business, I have listed none. New business? New business. We have our Nutrition, Inc. Year End Presentation.
Anyone who doesn't know who I am, my name's Victoria Parker, I'm here as the director of TNG.
Can I ask you to get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Don't be starting to blur.
No, no, no.
Okay. So I came over for Alonso Price back in February of 2020. So I've been here throughout COVID, through this past year, and I've been here as he was promoted to a regional position. So he will still see him, he will still support us. He just has more of a management role now. So what I have for you is your year adding food service report, and briefly we'll go through this to you guys, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. If you have any questions on anything in here, please let me know, and you can kind of touch base, and I can run through everything with you. So we do have a PowerPoint as well, like this will just do, because everyone has a copy. So operating in here in COVID, obviously, you're all up against a lot of challenges this past year, and how we're able to facilitate that. I'm sure a lot of, you've heard a lot of challenges from our faculty and our teachers and our staff on how we're going to be able to facilitate. Think of food service, and think how in the world are we going to be able to do that safely, following all CDC and PDE guidelines? Think of all the plexiglass that was up. Think of no students being able to touch anything in the cafeteria at all, and still being able to get this through those serving lines and still feed them with the timeframe that we have. So if you ever have the chance to get into any of the cafeterias, I urge you to do that because it is a completely different world, and being able to see that is remarkable. So some of the things that we covered this past year was providing accommodating service at each building, following all CDC and PDE guidelines. Working within our facilities team and building administration to fully support each other and execute a plan of success for each of them. So every single building had a different operating plan, and we met with our building administrators and spoke about how we would facilitate those plans in the best way she can perform. Building shutdowns due to COVID, how did we facilitate that? How did we communicate that? How did we make sure that we weren't going to have any product expiring? And we were making sure that we were communicating ahead of time. All of those things went into our planning, and successfully, we were able to not lose any product during any building shutdown. So that was a huge plus for us. Maintaining our labor budget reductions throughout the fiscal year, secondary buildings, when we first came back, we were only operating on a four-day schedule. So that substantially helped TNG with our labor being under the entire school year, which was great. Reporting COVID positive cases with TNG employees, yes, that did happen. We did have staff that were COVID positive. We did have a system that we followed, the concern alley, reporting that as soon as possible, again, following all CDC guidelines and CDC guidelines as well. We had great success with building meal participation and increasing revenue in year of January. One of the amazing things that we were able to do was increase our meal participation. And what that means is a reimbursable meal. So at secondary level, middle school and high school, we had a lot of packers because we had parents that were still unsure of how to bring their children through the line. One of the programs that we started off was called a meal packer program. And what that program is, it allows us to complete a packed meal from home with components that create a reimbursable meal. We executed that in every single building, and it grew phenomenally. I actually have examples in here, and I'll pass one out so you guys can see what that program is, how it works, and how we engage the students in it. You'll see in some of the slides, we have some still shots of what the serving lines looked like and how we executed service in each one of the buildings. We also did a free meal distribution partnering with the Berthmore Community Center back in March, which was phenomenal. And on that day alone, we were able to provide almost 400 meals to the community. So that was one of our driving things for this school year was, this past year, was creating relationships with the community. And how can we reach them? How can we encourage that gap? How can we continue to create those relationships? You'll see some of our staff implementing some of the programs in here that we did this past year. And one of the other successes we had here at the high school was our faculty and staff menu. We will be implementing that again this year, and hopefully it will be good over to middle school. It's a little bit upscale of a menu, not the same menu that the students are eligible to purchase. This is a higher scaled menu, a little bit more fine-tuned, but we had a lot of success with that. So that actually created more revenue for the district as well. One of the wonderful things that we were granted this school year was a $16,000 grant that Daniel Moon received. It was through the No Kid Hungry Foundation. They work with the districts on providing, whether it's material, equipment, technology, on increasing your food service program. We actually applied for this grant two years ago, and we were denied due to COVID. They were handing out grants to more urban areas, and Daniel Moon was denied. This past year, we did receive the grant. So you'll see some of the information in here that we utilized in order to qualify for this grant. And on the filing page, you'll see some photos of some of the equipment that we purchased with this grant. So my focus for this grant was our service for this school year will be very similar as to last school year. And that's due to COVID. You know, we're still going to be operating in COVID style. We're still going to have the same, maybe not as restrictive preparations and guidelines that we're going to follow. Our schedule is also very tight. So two things that we purchased for all buildings were new brand new carts. We're now able, we do have a building shutdown in our elementary buildings, we're able to take those meals directly to the classroom, whereas they were quarantined in the classroom. You had to like bring a cart in order to feed them. We got these industrial carts that will be phenomenal for us to be able to take to the classroom if the classroom does go on quarantine or the building does go on shutdown. We're able to facilitate them in ways quicker, faster, more efficiently, and with better equipment. At secondary level, we received four brand new brand new breakfast carts, which we will be using at both middle school and high school this year. And one of the reasons we're doing a brand new is due to our bell schedule. We do not have enough time to get the kids in the building and down to the cab to get them fed. So we're going to be operating the same this year as we did last year. We actually grew our breakfast participation anywhere between 35% to 48% doing a brand new. So it improved itself last year, so we want to continue to do in that direction this year. And I believe on the last slide, it goes over what the future will look like, our service style options, restrictions, and suggestions. Again, we'll be following all CDC and PDE guidelines. We are going to review what TNG suggests, and that'll be something that I will be engaged with badly, and we'll try to figure out what the best plan is and how we're going to operate. We will continue to introduce additional programs and strive to introduce at all levels to continue to increase meal participation and revenue. And we will continue to engage our students with nutritional information and providing heart-healthy nutritious meals and striving to educate at every opportunity. One of the things that we continue to do is summer feeding, so we are still in the deck with summer feeding right now. We have two daycare centers, the community center, and then our in-house programs that we're facilitating for. And again, next year, all breakfasts and lunch will be free. So we are trying to continue those relationships and continue to provide and recommend in the upcoming school year, as well as facility in-house. So we have a lot of new upcoming and exciting things this school year. I'm very excited to be able to be here with you guys, continue to further the district as much as I can. Does anyone have any questions? I know I went kind of fast. I apologize for that, but I didn't want to take too much time. In your folders, you have the Nutrition, Inc. magazine. That is just a monthly scripture that TNG hands out. I'm not going to call it now, but it's just some information for you guys to kind of go through and then the presentation as well. And then I'll hand out these bags that I don't get anywhere.
I just want to have to, it's a phenomenal job. I am extremely busy at the district office. She had done the entire brand herself, Vicky, and handled that completely. And the way she rolled it out, she got all her stuff together and everything like that, I can't be happier with as a district manager. I'll be very, very happy with the relationship we have with the district.
Agreed.
Can Stacey have a place over there?
Sorry?
Will you stick with Ways of Running Academy next year?
It's not being advertised. It's building level.
Got it. I was going to ask her about taking meals, but if it's not, it's fine.
So this is the meal packer badge program. This is what the students who are packing at home are able to receive, and then we're able to claim it as a reimbursable meal. So even if a student packs from home, we're able to claim it if they take the meal as a reimbursable meal, which, again, meal as a reimbursable meal, which again is reimbursement for the district. And this will be more than one board desk and possibly five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, as they go through the audit process.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, any board members have any comments, questions, concerns for nutrition aid? Okay, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I want to have a small discussion under new business, um, on, uh, the health and safety plan. Um, as, um, Mr. Scott had mentioned, we have had several parents, um, reach out to us asking if we were going to change our masking policies. Um, it's, we had our last meeting on the 26th and now today's the 9th. Um, since we had our last meeting, um, there have been two changes to the CDC's recommendations going forward. One for general public and one for, um, K through 12. There has, and, um, probably more importantly for this group here, um, the, um, the state department of health, um, still lists Berks County as being, um, moderate transmission of, of COVID-19. Um, but the, um, the numbers in our, in our county are going up and, um, the, the CDC just changed, they, they're, um, they use different metrics to measure what our transmission rate is. They changed us from moderate to substantial, I think, um, this weekend and, um...
Substantial is not the same.
It is, it's a different, it's a different, it's a different metric. Yeah, absolutely. Um, but if I, if I'm looking at the numbers correctly, the, the state numbers turnover at the end of this week, um, the 12th to the 13th, and, um, I don't know what they're going to be, um, but they could also move towards substantial. We are having, we do have more, more cases in the county. Um, and, um, I just want to have a roundtable discussion. Right now, our current, our current recommendation, um, in our safety plan is that, um, we are, um, encouraging mask use if you want to wear one, uh, school-wide. Um, just throwing it out, anybody want, want to, um, don't everybody jump at once.
I guess, you have some concern, the CDC is looking at it nationwide, so there are a lot of different events. Do we have anything very local? And when we were looking at numbers before, we had zip code.
Yes, um, the zip code numbers are still there, um...
Actually, actually, the, um, the data where we use an error off of a website called Mainline Mama was, um...
Yeah, that's not there.
...drilled down to the district and that has not been updated since June 23rd.
Right.
So right now, we're deferring to countywide data, um, just Berks County itself.
And there was some additional, there was some additional information that was able to be accessed at the department of education at the county level beyond what's available at the department of health. That also has not been updated since June of last year. But, um, but Dr. Cooper's right, there, the raw data is still out there, but there was somebody who was collating that data by zip code, taking percentages, because some of the people that have the 19508 zip code go to Daniel Boone and some of them go to Exeter and some of them go to Twin Valley. And then she did these, um, you know, population percentages to figure out what was going on in our district. And, um, um, yeah, that number crunching is not occurring right now. Of course, she was doing it in her free time. And, and so, um, so that information is not, is not available to us to drill down to our, to our district. Um, as for the other districts in the county, my understanding as of this morning was that Antietam had written into their health and safety plan that, um, when we went to substantial or high transmission rate, that would trigger them to be masking. And so they might be masking.
Those are the only, only districts.
And that's the only district in the county that is currently requiring masks. They are all strongly encouraged masks. So it's not like we're the only ones that are currently at that situation. I don't know, what do you, what do y'all think? Is there a situation that, I mean, do you feel comfortable with that? Do you feel... Go ahead.
They changed some, they changed some metrics over the weekend that are understanding. I don't think that should ever make an emotional decision based on how you feel, really, you know, we have always made our decisions based on information that's credible and you can check it out. Until we, if I had that in my case, anybody else, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that feel very upset over, there's a lot of people that care less, don't want it all. I think we've been always in a position for, take the data, provide lots of options for people to, they protect their children and themselves to go down the path that they feel best, as well as us making decisions based on good, solid information that's available by us. And we have to continually have that, is what I'm saying. And we don't, we have information from June, how do you make a decision based on your data?
Right, and that's why...
Other than feel on that side.
But the, like, what I, what I had said is that, you know, the information that's being provided by the CDC is county level. It doesn't drill down to our, to our district, but it, but it did, it did change, like, over the weekend. That's why we're having this discussion. That's not based on any, anything, you know, emotional, you know? I can't, I can't hear, I can't hear.
I remember when we made decisions open last year, we did buy the data that was standing there. And I think that's what we need to see to make a kind of decision, because the county's a big county. And so if we're talking about those cases being ready for, you know what I mean? Like, it's very hard to make that decision when you don't have that decision.
But if the only person that provided that data was a volunteer and they're not going to do it anymore, we're still going to have to make decisions, right? You know, even if it's not being provided by somebody. Correct?
I do have a question, and I guess the Pennsylvania Department of Health is a pundit and says just do whatever the CDC says.
Correct. But, but do whatever the CDC says, but it's up to the school district to decide.
Oh, yeah, it's all recommended, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's more of a, which is really what I actually...
Okay, but go ahead.
More information. There's the numbers, I keep reading, the, the numbers are going up, a lot of it is probable and the testing, you know, and everything, the difference. It sounds like half of it, the positives are probable tests, but they're not the spot of test. And I'm just, more information on severity that I didn't, people testing, I just, I didn't, more information, unfortunately.
Vaccinated, yeah, it's a lot of these factors that I've been considering. Definitely a cloudier.
Right. Okay, so, um, so, so I'm going to keep bringing it up as things change. Um, I don't want to just keep talking about it every meeting if nothing's changing on the ground. I had not heard what you said, that because if you look at the number of actual cases listed in the county, they are not that far off of what they were in August of 2020.
Continue, it's an article in the paper.
But, but, yeah, I'll have to look at that because, I mean, if you look at just like the number of positive cases they're saying that are new, um, they're, they're pretty close to the same, but I hadn't heard that they were relying on maybe not the same test and, okay.
And of course, I haven't had a scare up quite over here, but the children, we've infected down 70, so.
Yes.
If I was in Florida, I don't have like 70.
Right. All right. Yeah.
Is it fair to say, I mean, I have, I have three kids here, I think we all have kids in this school district, whatever, but, um, the gist of it is that I think we have, we're either waiting for a mandate possibly, but I'm not going to jeopardize any kids per se, but right now, we have not, you know, maybe this weekend we get some, some bad news, we're going to have another meeting before we open up.
Right.
For school.
Right.
I mean, I think it's fair to say that we're still, that it's a very fluid situation.
We were still debating what, what the beginning of school was going to be like at this point last year. I mean, as far as whether or not people were going to be in class or not, you know, I mean, so we were trying to match what, what, what we were doing with what was best for students and what was, what matched up with the facts on the ground as late as August last year. So for us to be in that's a similar situation.
Similar or not.
No, no, no.
Or not having a mandate.
To be, to be, to be like, to feel that there isn't enough information to warrant a course correction at this point.
Although also pivot could.
Yes.
We really do. I mean, so I think...
For sure.
Pivot now, today would be premature, I guess, if we're up, that's where I'm, I feel like a little bit premature. Not that tomorrow might provide information that we can make that decision, we're all available by phone, text, you have, have emergency meetings, everybody responds, everybody posts, so if something were to occur where I think should imminent danger in not masking all the children, I think this would have proved enough data.
Okay, so, yeah, and, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say, but I mean, I think if I remember from last year, Dr. Cooper has, oh, superpowers, but you have, you, you can, you can make a decision. Is that right?
Yeah.
Something where to pivot is, is, if you need to for the city. I'm just saying that something happened in the night, the next week or so, but obviously we have a meeting before the...
Right, yeah, you did give me an emergency authority. However, um, I would not do anything without first, uh... Speaking with the board.
But again, as Kevin said, we can, we can certainly pivot on the 20th, I believe it's the 23rd and make a decision with the information. That's two more weeks of information that we're, we're going to see. I mean, they have to work that right now, no matter what, on the bus.
Correct.
That's the law.
Correct, that's federal.
That's federal. So in school, that's...
And our, and our, our health and safety plan still calls for distancing where it's capable of happening, making use of outdoor spaces, those sort of things that we still, we were doing last year, um, outside of masking.
Are we still using that app?
Yes.
Yes, the health, the, what is it called? The app? That where people have to, what is it called? School Pass?
Yes.
All right. I only filled it out every day for 180 days, I couldn't remember what it's called. Um, all right. I just wanted to have, I, I don't want, I don't want to have these conversations in a vacuum and I don't want to have them without the chance for the public to hear where we are with things.
We still are recording school bans, are there...
Yes. Yes.
I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I mean, I think we all feel, you know, we're watching it and, you know, as Kevin said, we, we can pivot and we have one more meeting before.
Yes.
The doctor, who doesn't make a decision on his own.
Yeah. All right. Everybody feel comfortable that they've said everything they wanted to say about that before I open it up for public comment? Anybody have any public comment on that? Can come up to the, come up to the mic? Um, just, uh, yeah, write, write your name down and then, um, when you start talking, just, uh, name, name and, uh, address.
Thank you, my name is Robert Crowe, I live at 958. I just want to thank everyone for coming up and talking. Basically, I think you answered my first question about who would be updating our safety plan based on the regulations from CDC. Sounds like we're still having these conversations. Uh, just kind of like a follow-up to that, um, just think about will there be alternatives provided for families who don't want to risk COVID infection for children? CDC's strength is particularly weak, you know, more, children are more susceptible to it, um, and they cannot be vaccinated at this point, especially children with existing health issues that is at a much higher risk of serious symptoms, uh, just with that consideration. You know, families have different situations at home with, you know, different, uh, pre-existing conditions that could make that potentially very dangerous for, for children.
Thank you, I will come and talk to you after this meeting's over, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to make a request to the school board, actually, which we've discussed, um, to reconsider.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address? I apologize.
So Matthew Gass is, uh, at One Yellow House.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you so much. I'd like to make a request to the school board to reconsider its current stance and the best requirements for students in life this year. All of us in this room have been given the opportunity to apply the best protection that we can get for COVID-19, which is an accident. Parents of high school age students have been given that opportunity. Families of many students in middle school have that opportunity to save young children. However, as it stands today, parents with kids in intermediate, secondary and primary centers do not have that luxury. Seventeen months of community and others across the state and the country have done everything possible to be watched and protected. Last year, this school district stepped up and did what was necessary to keep students safe in this district. That included implementing digital learning opportunities for families, urging social distancing, and requiring awareness of how other folks governs the safety measures in school. All this based on recommendations to the CDC and other medical access authorities. These recommendations are still in place, but today, as of today, everybody's still discussing them. The board is choosing not to apply them. It's not made sense that this school year will be abundant with caution, instead of repairing this part of our most safe and youngest students in this school. But nothing more than have my child in attendance full-time in the school. However, based on the current decisions being made, I don't feel that that will be safe to fire. According to the latest information from CDC, as was briefly discussed, the right about, uh, how many COVID related transmissions is substantial. What's certain right now is that it's trending in a wrong direction. Safety is a crucial course of action, but starting this school is to require masking for our students and family. No other reason than to protect those who do not have the opportunity to seek a vaccine simply based on age. In addition, the continuation of the digital learning option for families who are concerned about nutrition itself, in other ways than this effective criteria can be a weak signal of admission. Current course of action is not amended, it's by word and specific, and that gives it a duty to protect students who reasonably perceive a risk of COVID. Daniel's position websites hold that first goal point missing, uh, Daniel various schools priority for these areas is healthy and simple. I ask that please follow up.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment? Okay, um, now there, um, it's time for presentations on, from the public on any item, not just the agenda items. Do you have any, any of those? Do I have a motion? Oh, do we have any, any, any final comments from the board? Now, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.